Lynn Taylor and Vice Mayor. I'd now like to call to order the February 5th, 2020 formal City Council meeting. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilman DeCecio.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilman Nowakowski. Councilwoman Pastor. Councilwoman Stark. Councilman Waring.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Guadalu.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here. We have an interpreter here with us today. Mario, would you please introduce yourself?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Mario Borajas. I'm going to be making a brief announcement for our Spanish speakers. Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Mario Borajas. Voy a estar sirviendo como su intérprete esta tarde. Si acaso necesitaron el servicio de un intérprete de español, favor de acudir hacia cualquier miembro del personal de la ciudad, hacia la parte de atrás del cuarto, para recoger sus audífonos para escuchar la interpretación. Muchas gracias. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mario. Will the City Clerk please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinances and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinance is number G6668-6672, S46331-46333, and 46336-46357, and resolutions 21806 through 21808.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williams, have you had a chance to review the meeting minutes from May 1st?
I have, and I move the approval as amended.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Motion and a second. All those in favor, please signal by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Councilman Waring, have you had a chance to review the formal meeting minutes from May 15th, 2019?
I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Also passes unanimously. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on boards and commissions?
Yes, I have a motion to approve Mayor and City Council Boards and Commissions nominations.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We have members of the public who are going to serve our city here today to be sworn in, so I will go and administer the oath. I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of the office of.
Discharge the duties of the office of jurors and board.
Commissioner's commission and difficulties issued.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you so much for your service. Congratulations. We'd ask you to go behind the podium so the council members can congratulate you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations to our new boards and commission members. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on liquor license applications?
Yes, I have a motion to approve items 4 through 11.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. City Clerk, are we ready for ordinances, resolutions, new business planning and zoning?
Yes, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, I have a motion to approve items 12 through 49, except the following. Items 13, 16, 26, 29, and 49. Item 16 will be continued to February 19th. Item 27 is continued to March 4th. And excluding these items for public comment, item 45.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guadalu.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes. Passes eight to zero. We next move to item 13. Vice Mayor.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve item 13, payment ordinance.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Oh, yes.
Guadalu.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes. Passes seven to one. We next move to item 26, noting that Councilwoman Pastor will not be participating in this item.
Oh, wait. I have to ask the City Clerk on this one. Our City Attorney, sorry. I think of you as the City Clerk. Sorry, Chris. I'm so used to working at both capacities. Item 26, I got pulled for a conflict. Could you, is it technically, is it a conflict?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, this item was identified because of the Phoenix Union High School District Board position that you hold. That's an elected volunteer position, so you don't receive any pecuniary benefit or detriment from that position. So therefore, there is not a legal conflict for your participation in this item.
And they don't, they're not part of the, my understanding is Phoenix L. is the one who is part of the...
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, my understanding is that on this one, there isn't any impact, any change at all. It's just the normal impact of a G plat.
Okay.
For both elementary and high school district.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is an agreement to protect the historic Fuller Paint Company warehouse. Vice Mayor, do you have a motion?
Yes, I have a motion to approve item 26.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. The applicant is here if we have any questions, but I think we are ready for a roll call. Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guadalu.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes. Passes seven to one. We next move to item 29. Councilwoman Williams has been working on this item for 18 months, so we... Councilwoman DeCecio, we would have to, we would need a motion to reconsider?
Right now.
Well, Councilwoman has waited 18 months, so I guess we're going to ask you to wait again.
What's another couple hours?
You're asking.
We have a motion to reconsider. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Pastor has seconded. What a good colleague. So we have a voice vote on the motion to reconsider. All those in favor of reconsidering item 26, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We next move to reconsider item 26. Roll call. We, oh, we need a motion? Okay.
I'll make a motion to reconsider item 26, to approve.
Second.
All right. So the council will now vote on approval of item 26, which is the agreement to protect the Fuller Warehouse. Roll call.
DeCecio.
No.
Garcia.
No.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Guadalu.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes. Motion passes six to two. All right, after 18 months.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I would like to invite the Humane Society to come up to the table because I'm sure there will be a couple of questions. This came to me from the animal rescue team and from Phoenix PD. And one of the things they have been experiencing is that what we now define as abandoned animals, people move out of their houses and left their pets behind. And the neighbors would call and say, nobody's feeding them, they're starving, et cetera, they have no water. And legally, the police couldn't go out and impound them because it wasn't cruelty. So if you would like to tell us a couple of bad stories of your experiences and why it's important to you.
Yes, ma'am. Would you like me to focus on the welfare seizures? Is that what you were, I missed it as I was walking up, I apologize.
Yes, no, I just tell them.
Absolutely.
Why you need this?
So what we're looking for changing the ordinance for is for welfare seizures, which is an animal is seized, the owner is either hospitalized, deceased, or arrested. And this is different than the cruelty cases. The cruelty cases, we are still asking for the 10-day seizure time, but for the welfare seizures, we're looking for a three-day turnaround time. A couple of things that this benefits, it benefits the animals and the court system because a three-day welfare seizure does not require a judge to approve the release of the animal back to the owner, which is what a cruelty seizure does. It also lessens the amount of time the animal has to stay in the shelter. We have the ability to return the animal either back to its original owner or someone that the owner designates as a responsible party for that owner. So it could be a friend, a boyfriend, a family member. We can release that animal more quickly back to the owner or its family, whereas that is not able to do that on a 10-day cruelty seizure.
So I'm hoping you will support this as part of our protection of animals. It has been deemed, I think, by the police department, is also would be very beneficial to them.
Well, thank you for your hard work on this. And shall we ask the City Clerk to read the title?
Item number 29 is for ordinance G6672 and ordinance amending Chapter 8, Article 3, Phoenix City Code by repealing and replacing Section 8-15 relating to the establishment of pounds, impounding and disposing of dogs and cats, reclaiming impounded dogs and cats, and pound fees.
Right. Move approval.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any questions or comments? Well, thank you to Councilwoman Leadership, for your leadership on this issue and for making Phoenix a great city for both two-legged and four-legged residents. Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guadalu.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes. Motion passes eight, zero. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Council.
We next move to item 45, which is a planning and zoning item, and we have three individuals here opposed. Would anyone like a brief staff presentation before we hear from the public? All right, then we will go ahead and take cards from the public, starting with Greg Stein. And Greg, if you could come forward, two minutes to address the council. And Greg will be followed by Angelina.
Mayor Gallego, City Council, thank you very much for having me. My name is Greg Stein. I'm an attorney for the Northgate Homeowners Association. It is located just to the south of the proposed development, and we are here to lobby our objections to the rezoning classification amendment. I also have two board members from that homeowners association with me here as well who'd like to express their concerns. Initially, the association is quite concerned with what we believe will be significant traffic impacts. This association is only accessible, has two entry points into the community. Those are on Grandview Avenue, which forms an intersection with 21st Avenue and 20th Avenue. Those are directly on the line of the southern boundary of this proposed development. There are a number of other communities that are to the west, to the south of this community. All of those are accessible through Greenway and through other local and collector streets. This homeowners association will be uniquely impacted, and at this point, without any traffic impact studies whatsoever, the association is kind of at a loss for how to assess what the impact will be on owners who are trying to get to work, trying to get to school, and getting into my next point, they don't know what they don't know. There could, there couldn't possibly be no traffic impact whatsoever, but there very well could be some significant traffic impact here, and we'd ask that the City Council ask for some additional studies from the developer before approving the proposed rezoning classification. The other thing I would note, with respect to the rezoning classifications that are proposed, many of the homeowners, I see I'm out of time, may I have a short additional time to finish a thought?
Yes, you may.
Thank you very much. There's really boundless discretion if the rezoning classification is granted with what can be placed on the property. Looking at the list from the light industrial classification, for example, you could have cesspool building, aircraft storage and manufacturing, rabbit and poultry slaughtering. There's, right now, again, the association and their board members just simply don't know what they don't know and would like a little bit more certainty in the way of conceptual plans, proposals from the developer about what will be placed on the property so they can level some specific objections if necessary at a later time. Thank you.
Thank you. Angelina will be followed by AJ.
Hello, councilmembers. Thank you for hearing me. I am a resident at Northgate, and in fact, my house is directly across the street from the proposed development site. So picture little dogs walking with their humans, people gardening and growing tomatoes, picture children running around. This is an area that is considered home by many families. I'm really just here to speak on behalf of myself and my neighbors. We want to protect our community. We're concerned about traffic. No one has provided a traffic impact study to us. We don't know what they're going to be building. No one has provided conceptual building plans for us. We are concerned about the number of feet of the setbacks right across the street from us. We're concerned about what sort of air and noise pollution we might have to deal with. Could make living there completely untenable, so you can imagine our apprehension. We just ask that we need a sit-down with the folks who, well, actually, the developers. They haven't granted that to us, and we've been trying for months. So we ask that you please just take a moment to consider our plight, and we also have letters from almost 100 residents, all expressing the same concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ansari.
Thank you, honorable councilmembers, for having us over and helping us voice our concerns about this whole process. The manner in which this whole process has been conducted has been very haphazard, has been rushed. We've not been given an opportunity to talk about it. Of the residents that have been there at the pre-conceptional meeting, with the first meeting with the council and the board members present at that time, we were specifically told that you guys should have talked about the zoning or checked the zoning before you guys bought homes in this neighborhood. So we feel we've all been steamrolled. The developers' representatives made promises that they were going to sit across the table and talk to us about what their plans are, what they're going to build on it, because the zoning itself is very vague. Somebody asking for an A1 classification, there's a lot of things that they can or cannot do in that area, and we as residents are the ones directly impacted by it. Like Greg rightly mentioned, we have all our ingress and egress coming out from the same streets. It's on Grandview, and we are the most impacted community by this. Again, the whole lack of transparency by the builders, they're just coming up with rezoning approvals without telling us what kind of buildings are going to be built, how they would look like, what kind of business activities will be carried on. So at this time, I speak for myself as a resident, as well as a president of the association, we do not have enough information to support this case. And all the other concerns about safety, the existing things that we're dealing with on Grandview is the illegal parking of trucks from all those existing businesses, even though they're zone red, they've never been towed, we've had issues with all the transients coming in and residing in those areas. So with all that in mind, we have a lot of safety concerns, traffic concerns about this whole process. The setback requirements, what they've come up with, is minimum 30 feet. It definitely needs to be a little bit more because, just the way it's laid out. Do I get another minute?
You had a final thought? You can do a final thought.
The final thought is, ma'am, we do not have a lot of information, transparency, and support on this one from the rezoning committee or the members who've attended the meetings and the hearings have laughed off our concerns. The whole thing was very demeaning and very disrespectful throughout the process. That's why we're here. As an association, I've got these 100-plus letters, which is signed by all the residents in oppose of this process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we can accept those letters if you'd like to submit them.
Yes, please.
Thank you. I will turn to Councilwoman Stark for a motion.
Mayor, the zoning that's there today would allow a lot of uses that the neighborhood would not have control over now. Simply, they're doing some reconfiguration, and through the rezoning, they actually added greater setbacks. They do ask, I believe, for a traffic impact study before any uses are submitted. So what you have today is a greater protection than what you have if we don't allow this rezoning. But I promise you, I will make sure that the developer sits down with you and talks about what their intentions are. I appreciate your neighborhood, your great neighborhood. I remember when you were developed, I was the planning director. But I do want to stress, the zoning's already there, they're just doing some reconfiguration, which I think will benefit you. So I would recommend approval, and I will, I grant, I guarantee you, I will call the attorney and make sure he sets something up with you, but I will recommend approval per the Planning Commission and the related ordinance.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
I'll try one more time.
Yes.
Pastor.
Oh, yeah, I was just continuing.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guadalu.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes. Motion passes nine to zero. We next move to item 49, and our Vice Mayor has been working on this for quite a while, along with Jeff Spellman, who is here today to speak on the item. Vice Mayor.
I, first and foremost, I just want to say this has been something very important for our office. Part of my commitment to the residents of my district is that our office would work hard to bring good jobs and economic investment to the west side of the city. We hear time and time again that people from District 5 travel to the east side of town to go to work, to go to school, and to have a good place to take their families to. We know the need for more economic, educational, and social opportunities in our district. Our hope is to transform the vacant Kmart building at Northern and I-17 into something that fills this need and brings direct community benefits. I am very thankful to our community leader, Jeff Spellman, thank you so much for being here today, and our local business owner, Gabe Sayah, for working with our office. Jeff met with us the first day that we took office, which is a little bit over seven months ago, and presented us with a great plan, and we saw the plan, and we were able to definitely see all the great work and everything that he been, everything he put into this plan, he put his heart into this plan, and it's part of the plan to try to revitalize 27th Avenue and that part of the corridor. So thank you so much, Jeff, for everything that you do for our community, day in and day out. And then I also want to give a big thank you. I know that Chris Mackey has a lot of projects that she could be working on, and I just want to thank her as well for taking the time and putting this as a priority in her team at CED. I am thankful for the commitment for this vision. Everyone knows that I have a huge passion for good jobs and community opportunities, and I appreciate everyone's dedication to see this project to the end. So I would like to make a motion to approve item 49.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Congratulations to our Vice Mayor. Councilman DeCecio, do you have a comment?
I want to congratulate her. I know how hard she's worked on this project, and this is significant, right off the bat it is, but what it's going to do, it's going to create that foothold in your district that you've been looking to get done and started for so long. So congratulations to you for all the work that you put into it, Ms. Guadalu. This is a big accomplishment for you.
And we do have Jeff Spellman here on behalf of the item.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, Jeff Spellman with Violence Impact Project Coalition. It's an understatement that we've been working on this for a long time. We've been working now for several years with city staff or council members on a revitalization plan for 27th Avenue. This includes the districts of 1, 3, and 4, and looking at ways to revitalize that entire corridor. So this is a community plan put together by all of the neighborhoods that are along that entire 27th Avenue corridor, and right now, our number one priority is getting something done with that Kmart site. And we have been so fortunate that we have an owner who's been extremely patient with us. I talked to him when the property first came on the market and said, what are you doing with this? And he said, I don't know, but I want something good for the community. And I said, would you please be patient and include us? He's been patient to the point of two years of being patient with us. That's why it's so critical that we move this idea forward now. We came up with this idea of a food innovation center, but really, it's a food innovation center on steroids because it brings in, what we're looking at is the education component that is so important to leverage this, not just supporting those food-based businesses along the corridor, but also helping people to improve and expand their businesses, do product research, development, those sorts of things that could happen in this. And that's why the community colleges are interested. WestMac is interested in that site, so there's a lot of interest in that. And I will tell you, the last meeting that we had with those stakeholders, the superintendent of the Washington Elementary School District was there, the superintendent of Glendale Union High School District was there, who has a CTE program in their district, and the superintendents of WestMac and the superintendents of the Community College District, were all there in the same room, said, we need that area of our town to really grow the opportunities for our people. There's a huge hole that's missing for education in that area. So we're excited, appreciate the Vice Mayor's assistance in helping to drive this forward, and it's a very small investment to try to see this project through and bring the investment dollars that we need to that site. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations to the impressive coalition. And Councilwoman Pastor may not be participating in this item. Any comments?
I have a conflict.
I think we are ready for a roll call. Councilman Nowakowski.
Mayor, I just want to thank the Vice Mayor for thinking outside the box and creating something in this big box on the side of the freeway that people are wondering what's going to happen there, and finally, they have an answer that we're looking for, a result that the community really wants, and it's going to empower people, and it's going to educate people, and it's not going to be a nice door. So thank you, Vice Mayor, for your hard work in bringing the community together.
Thank you, Councilman. Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Guadalu.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes. Passes seven, one. Wonderful.[1756.02] And we will turn it over to our city attorney to introduce the item. We do have an individual who did not get to speak last time and who arrived first today. So after our city attorney introduces the item, we will go to John Gonzalez.
During citizen comment, members of the public may address the city council for up to three minutes on issues of interest or concern to them. The Arizona Open Meeting Law permits the city council to listen to the comments, but prohibits council members from discussing or acting on the matters presented.
Thank you. And first with three minutes will be John Gonzalez, followed by Louis Rowe. John? If John is here, we will give him a chance to speak, but if Louis is here, we will start with Louis. If Louis, if you are here, if you could sort of signal. Adam Decker. And Adam will be followed by Michael Pierce, and then I'll, at the end, come back and call Mr. Gonzalez again.
Good afternoon, mayor, vice mayor, council. I am coming to you and concerns. First one real quickly is the Metro bus service. I've had more than one issue with a certain, two different bus drivers. One of them almost ended up, it felt like I was going to get assaulted, and the bus driver was the one that started all this mess. I left it, I called and left a concern with the lady who answered the phone at Metro, but she did hang up on me. This is why I'm here. I'm asking all involved that can go over and take a look and either fix this, and if they can't provide a safe bus service, let's get somebody else in here who can. Because everybody uses a bus, including infants and children. Second problem I have is the crosswalks. Motorists, not all of them, some of them are openly violating coming through when it's, the signal is for us to walk, and they're coming through or they're blocking us from coming through. And twice, twice I've almost been hit in the crosswalk. So I ask, maybe if there's enough funds, you can put cameras there. And my little thing was, fine them $1,000 and take a point against their record. Maybe that'll get them to straighten up, you know? We got to have a safe city, you know? I mean, that's, that's something that, if it comes in, you'll see me here in six months, and I'll readdress it until I get my way.
We'll hope to address it before then. Our deputy city manager, who oversees both our street safety and bus system, is here, and we'll hope to get it before six months.
Thank you, mayor. You all have a good afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Pierce, followed by Elizabeth Venable.
I'm here, I was released from prison about 10 months ago, and I ran into somebody that gave me a number to your office. And his name's Seppan, I believe it is. And through him, I've been homeless for 10 months now, since I've been released. And they're helping me to get some housing going on. I did have a voucher, and somehow it disappeared to some kind of cracks in the system or whatever. But, yeah, I wanted to thank you guys for helping me out. And he's also helped me try to contact my folks, because I lost contact with him also. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate that. We'll let him know. Elizabeth will be followed by Diane Barker.
Just as a note, many people lose their housing vouchers through what goes on in the sweeps around CAS. So I know several people have lost their housing vouchers that way. Just as a note. I have another citizen petition, although I was a little bit disappointed to find out that there didn't seem to be any response to my letter from the ACLU and the National Lawyers Guild and everything else. I don't know if you have to write citizen petition on the top of it, but I submitted it in the same way that you would submit it. Okay, so this one concerns the fact that there is essentially all the money available that the city needs for nearly 1,000-bed shelter from the Andre House. Because Nowakowski does not want it in his district, you do nothing. People are unhoused out of contempt. It's petty. It only prioritizes the rich, and I don't see any divergence from this. In the planning, I see occasionally some affordable housing. In addition, you're ignoring both the Supreme Court and the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. Today, you did a massive sweep around the zone around CAS, displacing 400 people from public property, not sidewalks, in abrogation of your responsibilities under Levonby, City of L.A. You are literally forcing people to leave behind their possessions, which go in a big dump truck to nowhere when they cannot move them in time. You need to be storing each and every person's belongings, each and every belonging, for 90 days. You're not even following your old guidelines, which is that friends could wash their property and they wouldn't take it. You're not following the ruling in any way whatsoever. This is appalling. And we know that public safety comprises approximately 70% of your budget. You have apparently no other spending priorities. All I have seen is you people going on the air to ask private citizens to do the job of the city, to give to shelters, to find resources that way. You're not willing to tax, you're not willing to allocate other resources. You're willing to go on the air and do a charity plea. And policing in a 450-bed shelter for the approximately 6,000 homeless residents in the area are not solutions. So, and again, they may be illegal solutions. I would invite you to respond appropriately to myself and the other organizations in question, including the ACLU, National Lawyers Guild, Put Air in Action, Poor People's Campaign, Food Not Bombs, and maybe others. So we have been very respectful, just one more line. We've been very respectful in this process, and we deserve no less.
Thank you. Diane Barker. And then if John Gonzalez is here, John would follow Diane.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. It's Diane Barker, and I reside in District 7. And what do we do Friday? We get out, we come downtown, it's first Friday. And what is that for you and me? Well, outside of a lot of eye-opening art, we have music, we have street dancers, of course, there's a lot of drinks, and there's a free trolley. It even takes you over to the Bohemian area that's over on Grand Avenue. This weekend, the Japanese Gardens, just gorgeous, is open for free, and you can get into the Herd Museum, too. And so I've really enjoyed living down here for 10 years, and we used to have, we got out every Monday, and we walked and ran, and we were visible down here. I'd like to see more of that. And it's my suggestion, if they're not already planning it with Convention Center, that these corporations that are coming in, and we have them come in the summer, they want to be outside, you know, and it gets very hot. And we really need to keep on cooling down the downtown. Bring some water in, put it down the walls. You can make this, you know, a renewable area, more of fans driven by turbine. You know, it's windy downtown. Many times, I lose my hat when I'm on my bicycle. So use the wind, use the sun to power downtown, make it a walking, livable city. I'd much rather walk and ride my bicycle. Now we have e-scooters, folks, okay? So why not, these corporations, you can make an e-scooter night for their company. And I've been out on the bicycles for Crescent Ballroom on Thursday. It's gorgeous in the summer, gets cool downtown in the summer at night. If we need to block off a certain street, you know, and have a little police surveillance, you know, for this e-scooter little tour around the downtown, let's do it. We need to have more and more things that people want to go downtown, and you can really tell it when I've been out driving, and I'm coming down. Once I hit the 51, Bethany, you can tell you're going down. You're going downtown, and you can see the downtown. We need to promote this more. I love the rest of Phoenix, but I'm downtown now, and let's do it.
Thank you. Is Mr. Gonzalez here? Okay, we are adjourned.